If you want to go during all this stuff, you can. We'll just call the roll. Daniel. Invitation.
Yeah.
It's gonna be you tonight, then. You and I. On. You bow your heads, please.
Hello, would please bow their heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here together safely tonight. Of this grant of mayor council of guidance, wisdom in their decision-making process.
Thank you. Okay. Call this July 23rd, 2013, regular meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Joe Gabriel, District Four.
I am here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District One.
Here.
And our Mayor, J. Max Davis.
Present. All right, y'all, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, opening remarks. I do have a couple opening remarks. Hello, Ms. Cameron. All right. I just wanted to share with folks that how appreciative we are of our staff here in Brookhaven. Susan Hyder, Clerk, you've been doing a great job of getting our agenda packets out to us and getting us in line, and I know you've been staying late, so I appreciate that. Marie Yar, doing a great job. Susan, everybody, Dana, Daniel. But also, from time to time, you know, we get emails about issues within the city. A lot of times, it's regarding the Pink Pony, or it's regarding "Don't Do This" or "That", but sometimes you get a text or an email from a citizen that kind of makes you smile. And so I got one just recently from a fellow who's in my neighborhood, who was pretty vehemently opposed to the creation of the city of Brookhaven, but he's also a builder. And he sent me a text the other day about Libby and our permitting department, and was letting us know that he was very pleased with the service that Libby gave when he was getting his permits, and said it was 100% improvement over the way things used to be, and that he wanted to let me know that and wanted me to express that to our community development department and to Libby, and to say, "Great job." And he said, "Other builders are talking about this, too," and that they're very happy to be being able to do business at the city of Brookhaven. So I wanted to share that with everybody and let you know that we appreciate that staff. All right, also, there are a couple of things on the agenda tonight that some, there are a couple of things on that were deferred last night, so there'll be a deferral, but there's a couple of items that might be deferred as well. Just to let you know, if there's an item on the agenda that you came here to talk about tonight and is later deferred, it doesn't mean you can't comment on it. So if you have a comment about anything on the agenda, any issue you're here on, please use the time for the public comment period to make your comments about that issue, so that we can hear it and can use it in our deliberations in the future. So please feel free to make a comment about anything on the agenda tonight, whether it's deferred or not. So, thank you. Are there any agenda announcements, Marie?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now, we're gonna open the period for public comments. So if you have a public comment about anything that's on the agenda tonight, deferred or not, or likely deferred or not, please come up and make a comment now. Just fill out one of those forms with, Daniel, Danny, you already have some, okay.
Yes, sir.
Who do we have first?
Bonnie Mayer.
Bonnie Mayer. Spell the name.
Sorry, did I pronounce that correct?
How's it spelled? Mahar?
Mahar, excuse me. Sure. Andrew Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers.
Good evening.
My name's Andy Rodriguez. My wife and my son and I live in Fairway Estates. That's a community of single-family homes within Lenox Park. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the elected officials of our new city for all the hard work that you're doing, and I'd like to thank the staff like you just did, because I can tell a lot of long hours went into working on this particular item. I believe in change and progress. I think change is a good thing, and with it comes opportunity, but on the opposite side of opportunity is risk. I think we need to make sure we're cautious about the risk in this new proposal. We already have a number of townhomes in the immediate area, including views of Lenox Crossing, villages, cobblestone of Brookhaven, and Haven on Briarwood. So as much as I'd rather these be single-family detached dwellings, I don't see that we really have a lot we can do to address that.
You're referring to item number one on our agenda.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. But moving beyond that, I'm not sure if I have the complete record of the proceeding, but based on what was posted, the impact analysis that was submitted along with the application seems to be more like a set of opinions rather than actual analysis. The answer to question two says, "Because there's already houses nearby, adding more won't alter the use or usability of adjacent or nearby property." I think we'd all agree that's not really a strong argument. The applicant's proposing to replace a church with 31 homes. Traffic is going to change for some, noise is going to change for some, quality of life will change for some, and property values are going to change for some. There needs to be a real analysis done as to how these changes are going to impact existing homeowners. On question three, they agree that traffic will increase, but then they also say that increase will have little or no impact. If analyses have been done from a foregone perspective that says that, that they have, then I'd love to see it, but I don't think there has been. As a resident who lives nearby, I'll tell you that exit from this and entry to this property is going to be difficult. The property sits on the apex of a curve. There's already a warning light in place there for people leaving the church when approaching traffic is coming, because for them, it's basically a blind driveway. So I can see if, you know, right now, with church primarily being focused on Sunday mornings, it's probably not as much of an issue, but when you move this into real-time kind of day-to-day traffic, I can imagine without a traffic light or something there, you're gonna see an increase in accidents there from people trying to turn out of the property in the first place, or people trying to turn into the property. It's gonna back up traffic going the northbound direction and it's gonna create problems on the southbound side from people trying to get out. So I would be also very disappointed if that traffic light had to come in later. So in other words, if we say, "We don't need a light, we put this in," and then six years down the road, or two months down the road even, after the developer's gone, and we say, "We have a traffic problem, let's put in a light," I, as a taxpayer, don't want to have to pay for that. I'm sure the other taxpayers in our city don't want to have to pay for that. Along those same lines, response to question five, so there's gonna be no negative environmental impacts. I did not see anything that really talked about what that was. They said that the environmental surroundings would be improved, but it doesn't really say how. It'd be useful to understand more about how storm water is going to be handled and what kind of noise to expect. Lastly, there's a lot of stuff about the art and the artist rendering showing trees, but it doesn't say exactly what's going to be there. It's important that we plant the right kind of trees and the right kind of foliage in place, so that we have a strong environment community that actually will last. We don't want to put junk trees that are gonna fall down whenever we have a storm. So in summary, I would like to encourage the city to keep in mind, these decisions are ones we're gonna have to live with for decades. If compromise is necessary, and I'm sure it will be, let's focus first on what's best for the city in the long term. Growth is good, but reckless growth is bad for the city and leads to expensive messes we'll have to clean up anyway in the end. Our city is nice, and it's getting nicer. Let's stay on that path and fix problems before they start. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We can't answer or ask questions of public comments. We appreciate your comments. Daniel, is this clock, is it doing a 2:45 warning and then a 3:00 clock? So the first one is at 2:45, is that right?
It does a 20-second warning.
20-second. All right, so if you are speaking and the bell goes off, you have 20 seconds, and then it goes off again if you just finish your thought, if you haven't finished at that point. Susan, I have a question about this. The developers requested a deferral, and I think Planning Commission has obviously recommended a deferral. What is your knowledge on how many meetings or if there are any other meetings scheduled between the neighbors and the developer? Do you have any ideas to that or what's going on, if there's anything scheduled?
I know that there have been attempts to have meetings, but I've not been updated from the attorney for the applicant relative to the latest meeting.
Okay. Is the attorney for the applicant here tonight? Do you know?
There is a representative from the law firm here.
Okay. Were you gonna speak anyway?
I can, Your Honor. Mayor Davis, I'm happy to speak. I'm Julie Sellers with Weiss Manueck on behalf of the applicant. My understanding is we were waiting for some site elevations that I think we receive possibly today, and that's what was, we were waiting to have those in hand before rescheduling yet another meeting with the concerned neighbors. There have been meetings that have taken place, and I think as the council's aware, I think the Planning Commission did recommend approval with some conditions. We'd like some additional time to continue working to address the concerns of the neighbors and reach a consensus on those issues, but my understanding is we do have the agreement of the Planning Commission and that there, I know that some other neighborhood residents were in attendance, and I believe everyone was of the understanding that it would be deferred.
Okay. If you are a neighbor or resident near this development, could you please raise your hand? Okay. So if you see these folks, I think it'd be good, I'm telling this to Marie, it'd be good if the attorneys, the developers representative and the neighbors afterwards spoke and possibly set up a meeting time. Would you think that would be a good idea?
I think that would be fine. I understand that Mr. Dillard is the lead attorney on this, and he's not here, so I don't know if we have his calendar, but certainly, perhaps she could get some dates, different dates, and then they could lock into that and then confirm the meeting.
Exactly. And if there's any neighbors that are present today that have not been in touch with our office, I'm happy to provide my contact information, so that we can make sure that they're included on the meetings that we do end up scheduling.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Susan?
Just a point of clarification, just to be clear. The Planning Commission did not recommend approval, they recommended deferral.
Right, that's what it said on the agenda. All right, more comments. If we, maybe we could get the comments on this Druid Hills issue. If you have comments on that, we'll take those folks now, to kind of keep continuity. So if you have, if you fill out a card, come on down.
I'm gonna go through the card list and the rest of the folks.
Daniel, would you repeat the card application process, please?
I have public comment cards here. We ask that you fill those out before you speak. Large majority of you already have. Once I've gone through that list, if you're still interested in speaking, you can come up here and speak, and in the process, fill out a card. So, sir, for instance, you can come up here as soon as we're done with the stack I have.
Okay, but Dana, if we could keep it to this Druid Hills issue first, and then go to other issues after that. And if you state your name and your address.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for your time. My name is Andrew Koss, K-A-U-S-S. I'm the owner of property in Villa de Vista, which is the seven-unit townhome project which is immediately south of the proposed site of the rezoning. I have previously corresponded with each of you and members of the Planning Commission regarding what I believe to be the legal impropriety of this rezoning, but that's not the basis, what I've come to speak about this evening. In advance of the Planning Commission meeting earlier this month, I suggested to Mr. Dillard that I did not think that the process of negotiation, which Mr. Dillard and his client indicated that they wanted to undertake in good faith with the members of the neighborhood in order to try to come to an agreement on this rezoning, had had enough time. There still remains to be critical information that has not yet been provided by Mr. Dillard's office. There was reference to the sightline elevations, and in particular, details of what landscape buffering would be proposed to be part of this project to make it more acceptable to immediately adjacent property owners. Mr. Dillard suggested to the Planning Commission the possibility of deferral on my suggestion, frankly, because I wanted to allow the process of discussion with the developer to proceed and conclude to determine whether a satisfactory arrangement could be reached. So for Villa de Vista and my neighbors, we both initiated the idea of a deferral to allow further discussion and support this council's taking action to defer this matter, to allow the process to conclude one way or the other, successfully or unsuccessfully. And if it's unsuccessful, then we'll have a different conversation at some later meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Koss.
Thank you very much.
Koss or Koss?
Koss.
Koss. All right, next.
Mary Novaté.
Nowatney? About to work on linguistics with you, Daniel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmembers, my name is Mary Novaté. I'm the president of Fairway Estates of Lenox Park Homesteaders Association.
There you go.
And I would like to express my concern about the potential approval for this project. But before I go on, I'd like to ask you, have you all actually driven past that project? I think, could you see by a raise of hands, have you all driven past that project?
We can't really respond, but I would say, have you driven by the project on Druid Hills? I have, too.
Have any of you driven into the parking lot of the existing facility? And if you have not, I would encourage you to do that, and try to get out of that parking lot. Try to turn left from that currently, from that current parking lot, because you can't do it. We know there's a problem, because there's an existing sign there that says, "Limited sightline." We know there's a problem. You're potentially approving something that is going to cost us all significantly in the future. So I'd just like you to consider the difference between the short-term gains for approving this project and what this is gonna cost our community as we move forward. And it may not be us who are paying this year or next year, but somebody's going to pay in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novaté. Next.
Danny Ray.
Danny Ray.
I certainly have a vested reason for getting up here tonight, because...
Address.
1466 North Druid Hills Road, across the street from the project.
If you can help out by speaking into the microphone.
I'm sorry?
I just couldn't hear you. Speaking into the microphone, I couldn't hear you.
There you go.
The light where the people come out of the church that flashes most of the time, doesn't flash. I have seen so many accidents from people trying to pull out of there on Sundays, it's not funny. Not only that, it's, I can't even get out of my driveway right now as it is. Sometimes it takes me five to seven minutes to get out of my driveway, just to make a right turn. People have gotten where they don't care, they just pull right up in back of each other between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m., and won't let me out of my driveway. I mean, this is ridiculous. And how are you gonna put a red light there? I couldn't even get out of my driveway then, period. It just doesn't make sense. I don't see how this is gonna help. If you were gonna put that project up and put a big wall over there and direct the traffic back through another neighborhood, maybe, but you can't do it on North Druid Hills Road. That's just all there is to it, I'm sorry. You guys need to come over there and check this out yourself, just exactly like she said. You can't get out of there. It's dangerous, it's dangerous, it's dangerous, period.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
I have no more cards related to that issue, sir.
Well, we're not gonna finish until we get, we're not gonna finish until we get everybody who wants to talk to talk, sir. If you haven't filled out a card, please come down and get one or get one up there, please.
Your name, sir?
Ronnie Henny.
Sorry about that. That's okay.
Don't be skipping over folks, Daniel.
I'm Ronnie Henny. I live at 2238 Matthew Street. We are adjacent property lot 248. We are opposed to it at this point, especially six townhouses, roadways, garages adjacent to us. Our house is 14 feet from the development property and 15 feet within development of a roadway and 20 additional feet to garages and six townhouses to back end, such as gusts and noise, air pollution, and whatever from at least 20 cars. So we're quite concerned about it. We have met with the builder and attorneys, but nothing has really changed. And last June, this past June, sorry, last month, this past June, we were supposed to have a line of sight, and there was an engineer supposed to come out and give that to us. It never happened. And now we're pressed again with the meeting coming up on August 7th, and we still don't have any information. So within a week, we're supposed to make decisions, and this was supposed to be done over a month ago. So I'm not very optimistic that we're gonna have anything in hand by the time the committee meets in August 7th for the community development. So I am somewhat very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Anybody else on this, on the Druid Hills issue?
I have no cards, sir. Anyone else?
Anybody else who's here to talk about that or wants to talk about it? All right, thank you. All right, more, any other comments about any other thing that's gonna be on the agenda tonight?
Yes. Who would like to go first on item 1099? Mr. Bell?
I'll be the victim.
Go ahead.
Hopefully, it's an opportunity. We don't want anybody to feel like a victim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to come back. Last time I was here was almost two months ago, and I ask you to allow us to build our new home here in Brookhaven and to increase the maximum roof height from 35 feet to 40 feet. Couple things about the home. It's not a three-story home, it's on a high rise. It's a normal two-story home, a home that has been approved and built in Milton, Roswell. It's been built in the city of Atlanta, Buckhead, and even Forsyth County. When you look at all the growth we've had since the market bottomed out, we saw a decline after 2006, 2008, derivatives, credit default swaps really sunk the market October 2008. All those things happened, killed the market, but recently, we've seen the market start coming back. Last year alone, AJC, they were showing some of the stats for some of the growth coming back. Cobbin County, Cobbin, Forsyth County, had very solid growth for single-family home construction permits issued. Pretty much every county had growth. Even Cherokee County, they increased their permits 78% from the prior year. 78%, that's a lot. One county, though, didn't have growth, actually had a decline. Want to guess which county it was? No, you can't answer, but it had a 3.8% decline, which is a shame, because we are missing on a phenomenal opportunity to be able to grow. And the number one reason stated or cited by the AJC was restrictive government. That being said, make sure I don't lose my place here. That being said, I'm asking no longer delay. Please vote on this tonight to increase the roof height. We had a 12.2% increase from the prior year, just in home values across all of the U.S. That was an opportunity for people to come here to DeKalb, now Brookhaven, and be able to build in this area. The number one reason fueling all the growth in the new construction permits, historically low interest rates. We've all seen it. Most people refinanced their existing homes, or if they built new or bought new homes, they took advantage of the low interest rates. But that's changing rapidly. As of May 1st, for a 30-year fixed mortgage, the average rate across Bank Credit.com was 3.52%. As of July 17th, that rate is now up to 4.56%. What does it mean? Doesn't sound like much, it's just 1%, right? Let's put it in perspective, for a $300,000 home on a 30-year fixed mortgage, that equates almost $50,000 more interest over the course of the loan. That's a lot of money. Imagine if rates continue to go up, how much it's gonna be? So what does it tell me? As rates increase, less demand for new homes. We're running out of time to get to participate in the record growth. Educated, tax-paying families and professionals are choosing to build in other cities based upon the permit stats alone. They're moving other places. Let's revitalize our city, increase our tax base, become the most attractive city in Georgia to build a new home. Longer we wait, the higher interest rates will be, so act now, capitalize on the opportunity, increase the roof height, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
Blair Bell.
Good evening. I'm Blair Bell, wife of Joe Bell, and just really wanted to come here tonight and urge y'all to vote on the approval of the new height ordinance. Really, just from a new wife perspective, we just got married about a year ago. We live in, on Osborne now, and we have a beautiful lot in Ashford Park, and we had plans to build a family home. So I would really like to raise my first baby in this home, and I can't do that if we can't approve to the new roof height. So I just wanted to urge you all to vote on it and not wait while the interest rates are going up, so I'd really appreciate that. Also, thank you very much for having us tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Ms. Bonnie.
Good evening, Bonnie Major, and I am not a DeKalb resident, but I'm here for Joe and Blair Bell, and I'm a real estate agent.
That's okay, we've had plenty of folks who are not residents of Brookhaven. Any comments are the best today.
So thank you for having me this evening, and I'm commenting on the same ordinance, which is 1099, for the roof height. And the only extra comments that I want to add that weren't added at the original meeting was, again, this isn't anything out of the ordinary that any of the surrounding cities, municipalities, don't have. Everybody has an average, they take what's considered an average roof height of 35 feet versus what, you know, you all have in here, which is from the threshold, et cetera. So I think it, you know, to come more in line with the Sandy Springs, Chastain Park, Buckhead, and again, these aren't McMansions, we're, you know, looking at between a 5,000, 5,500 square foot home that is a, you know, a nice-sized home to raise a family in, as broken Joe has said. One of the things I really want to point out, because of course, I know money talks a lot, and that is the tax base on this particular property. It was 1193 for the existing homeowner that had been there for about 40, 50 years, and obviously, just for the land alone, and for Joe and Blair to build their dream home, that tax would go up from 1193 per year to well over $20,000 per year for the city of Brookhaven. So if you can, you know, allow that roof height, and that continues to grow with the growth and development, as this real estate market has taken off again, it can really raise the tax base for the city of Brookhaven. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And hopefully, vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
I have no more, sir.
Okay. All right, any more comment on anything on the agenda? All right, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on with our agenda. Consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have a number of items on the consent agenda, beginning with several meeting minutes from June through current of July. In addition, there are a number of intergovernmental agreements between the city of Brookhaven and DeKalb County, beginning with 911, GIS data sharing, ad valorem tax billing, and also the intergovernmental agreement for the...
Can I stop you for one second? I just want to let the attorney on the Druid Hills property know that the residents who are here for that and are walking out the door right now, if you wanted to grab and give them your card, or if you hadn't already, just to let you know that, just a heads up. All right, go ahead, Marie, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's fine. And the last IGA among the group of the IGAs is the Georgia Crime Information Center, the GCIC, Criminal Justice Information System, holder of record agreement between the city of Dorival, Georgia, and the city of Brookhaven. That is on the consent agenda.
All right. Any motions on the consent agenda?
I'll move that we approve the 13 items on the consent agenda.
For a second?
Seconded.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Madam Clerk, please commence the consent agenda. Is passed. Announcements? Do we have any announcements?
Just an announcement, tomorrow, we're inviting the public, as we have the apartment community landlords and owners to come and meet with us here in council chambers tomorrow morning to discuss the apartment inspection program that we're going to launch the first week in August, and later tomorrow afternoon is a meeting with the tenants of all the apartment communities in the city to discuss that very matter.
All right, I'd like to also announce, again, that next Wednesday, July 31st, at 9:00 a.m. at Town Brookhaven, there will be the launch of our police department, so there'll be some speaking and some dignitaries there and some police cars, some brand-new police cars, lots of them, and we'll be taking over police services from DeKalb County. We expect DeKalb County to be there, so please, if you want to come and see your brand-new police department on its first day of operation with that ceremony, please show up. It's gonna be a fun time, I promise you. It's at 9:00 a.m. next Wednesday morning, at Town Brookhaven, on the green, the lawn there. All right? Okay, any reports, presentations?
None.
Okay, old business?
Old business. The first two items, I would ask that the mayor and council allow for a deferral, and those are intergovernmental agreements with the county concerning police services and parks and recreation services.
Okay. Is there a motion for the first two items?
Now, I would like to move that we defer on old business. Point one, consideration of approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven for police services, and number two, consideration and approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven for parks and recreation services.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of deferring the first two items on the old business agenda, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, they're deferred. Number three?
All right, your last item under old business is an ordinance to, for the charter of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia, to be amended so that upon passage, section 2-15, ordinance form, procedure shall be revised. This is the second read, and it does require action.
Is there a motion on number three?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm moved that we approve ordinance 2013-05-01, an ordinance that the charter of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia, shall be amended so that upon proper passage, section 2-15 ordinance form, procedure shall be revised.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
We had talked about establishing a policy. We had a draft of a policy, but I don't know that we've seen a final one, and I'm wondering, do we want to pass this before we have a final policy in place to implement this? I know there were some concerns of council about rushing things and wanting to have some guidance as to how we would proceed on certain matters. What's the status of that policy, and, and do we want to wait and approve this together with that policy document?
The policy is, is what I presented at the last meeting, which reflected conversations both in council meetings and in the work sessions. There was no change to that policy outline.
Can we have that, that document, if, if this is passed, put in the record with this?
Yes.
Okay, we can, okay.
And we agreed as council that we're gonna monitor this, and if we decide that we want to revisit this down the road, we're gonna be looking at this cautiously for the next three to six months.
Yes.
So will we take the right to do that?
Well, ultimately, it's up to us to decide when we use this, is that correct?
We have the option, from my understanding of the policy, that if we decide that a particular decision we need to make needs to be out these, outside these parameters and put on a two-read, we have the option to do that, per issue.
Is that right, Bill?
Well, you, functionally, you can do it, you just simply defer.
Okay.
You can have one read, and if you think you need more time in your input, you just defer it to the next one, and you can, you can do it then, or if that's not enough, you can defer again until you get it to where you want it. So there, there's functionally the ability to do whatever you need to do, as much time as you feel you need to have, even with a one-read policy.
Right.
Or run one-read ordinance.
I think the safeguards are there.
All right.
Before we vote, can I have whoever made, or would it be possible for whoever made the motion to amend it to include reference to the policy?
Yeah, yeah.
So that they're intertwined?
I'd be happy, be happy to amend my motion to include the fact that the policy that was presented at the last council meeting be made part of the permanent record for this, for this ordinance.
Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
Any second?
That, that gets you.
Okay.
Jim, did that satisfy what?
Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure that we had that on the record.
That it goes with the, in the suspicious city records with the ordinance. Any more discussion?
The only comment I'd, I'd make on it is that, you know, I think there is initially some concern about this ordinance, but the purpose of the ordinance is to allow the city to move efficiently, and, and still, the ordinance allows us the opportunity to press the pause button if there's concerns from the citizens or council, so it's a win-win.
And just for folks out there who might not know what we're talking about, this is a charter amendment allowing us to go from two-read on every ordinance to one-read, and we're, we're having a policy with it that states that if we want, if we need to make sure that we defer things or have a second read if we need to, we can, we can do it on our own. But the purpose of the amendment is to make us more nimble on ordinances or things that are non-controversial, we don't have to wait two or three weeks to get them, or a month to get them passed when they need to be passed. If there's an issue of controversy, you know, at our peril, we ignore the public and rush something through, so that's what the purpose of this ordinance is. All right, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me, because I think this was really important when you all were deliberating over it. Another purpose of it was to allow your public to be engaged early on instead of waiting for a second read, so that the first time that an ordinance was presented, would allow that and afford that opportunity so that you could directly hear from them.
Forgot about that, that's correct.
Correct.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance as amended, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please, enter the minutes that it has passed. New business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item one under new business is the rezoning, ID'd as 1098, rezoning, RZ 13-01, 1475 North Druid Hills Road, rezoning of 3.9 acre parcel located at 1475 North Druid Hills Road, Northeast Atlanta, Georgia, 30319, from R 75 to R 88, to allow for the construction of a 31-unit townhome project, tax parcel number of the subject property is 182004042. Applicant requested a deferral during the planning commission hearing, planning commission recommended deferral. This matter is a public hearing and a first read, but again, the recommendation is for deferral.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that we defer this rezoning ordinance to the council meeting on August 27th.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
I think it's important to point out, what we did tonight is that we held comment on this, conversation on this during comment time, so that we could protect the, the opportunity for a public opinion. Correct, Mr. Mayor?
It, it's true, and if this is on the 27th, then that means it'll be a month, a little over a month, maybe a month and a few days for the developer and the neighbors to get together and talk about this more. I know that we had mentioned in public comment that August 7th was the date that would be the time where this might be considered, and that's gonna be before the planning commission on the 7th, I believe. No formal action will be taken on this, there can be no approval before the 27th, I believe.
And I'm getting some looks, is that date correct, the 27th is, is our council meeting date?
August 7th, planning commission. August 7th, the planning commission, August 27th, city council.
Correct. That's, if I need to amend my motion, that, that was the intent of it. Motion to defer this so that it will first be heard, and planning commission, August 7th, heard by city council on August 27th.
And if it's not ready by then, there can be another deferral if need be, I guess, but hopefully it'll be, some things will be worked out by then.
But what we were hoping to do is that if we put it under the public hearing tonight, it would have been the one requirement required, and we didn't want to do that, we wanted to make sure that it was available for residents to make sure they had a public hearing on it. So hopefully you'll resolve it before that, but if it's not, it's gonna be open for public hearing.
Yeah, the effect is this, is this to give us, give you all another public hearing on this, so it was sort of a semi-public hearing with the public comments, but there'd be a public hearing dedicated just to this issue on the 27th of August, if this motion passes. Is there any more discussion? Okay, is, all in favor of adopting the ordinance, I'm sorry, of deferring the ordinance until August 27th, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please, enter the minutes that this ordinance has been deferred. Number two?
Number two and number three, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, both of these are public hearing matters. While they do call for a first read, they do require a public hearing, so we could begin with item number two, which is ID'd at 1099, and that is the rezoning, RZ 13-03, it's a text amendment to the city, city zoning ordinance related to building height, the maximum height for single-family residences, and threshold requirements for single-family detached structures. If you could take the public hearing matter first, and Ms. Cannon is here to present, you did hear her presentation during your work session.
Okay, Ms. Cannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Text amendment, RZ 1303, is a text to make changes to the zoning ordinance relative to height in three areas. One is redefining the method of how we measure height. The second is increasing the maximum height for single-family from 35 feet to 40 feet. And the third amendment is to remove reference to threshold elements within the ordinance. This text amendment went before the planning commission in July, due to the nature of the night of the meeting, which was July 3rd, the planning commission did not open the floor for public hearing and did recommend deferral. The item before you tonight is one that you can consider as it is proposed to you, you can consider the deferral recommendation from the planning commission, you can consider the proposal to you and further amend it, or you can deny it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you formally open the public hearing now?
Yes, the public hearing is formally opened. Any comment on this item here? Any more comment? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing on this, and then we can, is there a motion?
This is a first read.
A first read, there's no motion, okay, first read. Nothing, nothing, no action required.
Correct.
All right.
The next public hearing item is a text amendment to the city sign ordinance, RZ 13-04, and Ms. Cannon is here to present.
Mayor and council, RZ 1304 is a text amendment to the sign ordinance. This particular text amendment went to the planning commission during their July 3rd public hearing. The purpose of the text is to amend the ordinance to allow the staff the ability to not permit signs that are not proposed, or signs that are existing, proposed or erected on properties that do not have businesses that are legally operating. The current language in our ordinance does not give us the opportunity to deny signs that meet all application requirements and dimensional requirements, and this particular text will allow us to make sure that signs that are erected in the city of Brookhaven are for businesses that are lawfully operating.
Okay, I'd like to formally open the public hearing on this issue. You might have any comments about this part of the sign ordinance? Just please fill out your form and come on down.
You have one person coming, Daniel.
Was it Ms. Coleman? Oh, that's right.
Cindy Coleman, my question is, can you clarify this on, on real estate signs?
I don't believe this has anything to do with real estate signs, this involves business, signs on business property, I believe. Well, I'm not supposed to be answering that, am I? I'm sorry, I retract.
I just want to know some notes because...
Bill, can you, can you clarify what this addresses, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. What this addresses is that if business is not legally operating, if business is not legally operating within the city, they're not gonna be allowed to make an application for a sign for their business, and that's, that's the extent of what this does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What he said. All right, no, any more public comment on this? All right, public comment section is closed on this, there's no action required because it's a first read?
Correct.
All right, number four?
Number four and number five, you might choose to take those together. Annexation 13-01, Century Center annexation petition, land lots 195, 196, 201, 203, and 204, 18th District, DeKalb County, Georgia, approximately 100 acres. This matter was heard last night in a public hearing, and it was motioned to be deferred for tonight for a second read, as was item number five on the business, new business agenda, rezoning ID number 1113, RZ 1305, consideration of rezoning of Century Center Office Park to PC3 Pedestrian Community District located off of Claremont Road and land lots 195, 196, 201, 203, and 204, 18th District, DeKalb County, Georgia, and this was also deferred from last evening's hearing.
No action required?
Correct.
Correct. All right, other business? All right, no other business?
No other business.
All right, public comments? Now, this is the last section for the, if you want to have anything on the agenda that you wanted to comment about, because now's the time to have a public comment. We've had a lot of public hearing comment stuff tonight, but this is the final one, so if you have any comments you want to make about anything on the agenda, please do so now, and if you have, turn in a card, please, make a comment. Yes, sir, and you don't have to fill out another card.
Yeah, thanks. The reason I'm talking is that at the meeting that we had last month at the planning commission, they stated that the city council would consider this on September 4th. We made plans around that, now it's changed to the 27th. How is that? How does that happen?
Marie, do you know, or Susan, do you have any idea if they said that, or if that's what's going on?
We made a note of it. Put it home and put it on the calendar.
It's the first thing I'd like to...
I don't recall that, I apologize if that was said. I mean, I don't know that we actually have a council meeting then, do we?
September 4th is a Wednesday.
Yeah, we don't have many meetings on Wednesday.
So I, I don't know if, if we miscommunicated somehow, I apologize for that, but the next possible meeting would be the 7th and the 27th.
Okay.
So I apologize if we misled someone, we certainly didn't mean to.
Ms., did you have a comment about that?
I, I can't speak to it, I wasn't there, but I was going to support if there is a council meeting that first week of September, I know that Mr. Dillard and I are gonna be in Toppet County in trial on August 27th, so we certainly would not oppose, and certainly if people have made plans, but if that's not, if there's not a council meeting that first week...
Can the, can the applicant request a deferral?
Yes.
At that meeting, at the 27th? Okay.
Would that be deferred at the planning commission? Are you saying at the planning commission?
The next possible planning commission meeting would be September the 4th.
Okay.
And then in suit would then be the council meeting.
What is the second Monday, the second Tuesday in September?
The 10th.
The 2nd Tuesday.
So the count, the planning commissions can meet on August 7th, and then we can meet on the 27th. So you're saying the next planning commission, if they defer, would be September 4th?
Correct.
But if they came, if it came before us on the 27th, could we not defer it to the following month?
Well, I understood that the, the conflict was the applicant's representative was going to be out of town the week of the 27th, but I didn't hear that for August the 7th.
That's the planning commission.
Right, it goes to the planning commission on August the 7th, right.
Yeah, no, I wasn't mentioning to defer that one.
Right, no.
I'm saying ours.
Exactly, so if it's heard by the planning commission on August the 7th, and we know that the applicant isn't present on the 27th, instead of requesting a deferral, we can just move it to the agenda of September the 10th.
If we're a mayor's company.
Second, and this is public hearing, public comment. So if there are any residents here living in that area that would like to come on a September 10th date for this final to be approved, you could please come forward and let us know if that's something that's possible for you. If it's impossible, I'd rather know that, if there's gonna be a neighborhood cruise or something, then everybody's gonna be out on...
Never test this fire.
Yeah. Good. Twitter for the day.
Yes. Check in with Blackberry there. So, to review, August 7th is planning commission, and then August 27th would be when we would hear this again, if the planning commission doesn't defer it, so it seems like emails, I don't know, to, or direction, or whatnot, to the planning commission should be that they should defer it until the 4th, and then we would hear it on the 10th. Is that right, am I? Amazingly, am I right?
If, if it's scheduled for the planning commission on August the 7th, I mean, it depends certainly on, on how they act, on how they move. If, if they move to defer, then, you know, it's not going anywhere other than currently the way our ordinance reads, is any deferral recommended by the planning commission must be approved by the mayor and council. So if it does not, if it's not held back for a deferral and it's heard with a recommendation, I mean, the planning commission can make a recommendation and allow the case to proceed, or they can not make a recommendation and the case still proceeds forward, so...
Can you order the planning commission to watch the video of this portion of our...
We'll strongly suggest it, but I, I think what's important first and foremost is that the public hearing is gonna be held by the planning commission. When that case is heard, it is customary to state for the public, for their information, when that case will travel to the mayor and council.
All right, Susan, you got all that?
Why don't we just talk about the dates one more time? And that is, I think the issue that was heard was that the public felt that they came away from the planning commission hearing, thinking the meeting was gonna be on September the 4th. The planning commission doesn't meet on September the 4th.
No, it wasn't planned.
The city council doesn't meet on September the 4th, no one meets on September the 4th. No one meets on September the 4th.
And then we just heard from the developers' attorney, they're not going to be in town on the 27th.
So therefore...
And then when we said September 10th, a lot of this went up in the audience, so...
So there's a proposal then, I believe, for the planning commission on August 7th and the city council on September the 10th.
I don't know if it's a proposal, this is public comment period, so...
I'm just fleshing that out there. I think that's on the table for consideration.
Thank you, all right, sounds good.
I think what the public is wanting is some certainty on when it's going to be heard for a public hearing, and...
We won't know that until August 7th.
Correct, but I think for staff's purposes and for the public to understand, this case with all expectation is headed to the planning commission for their August 7th public hearing. And at that date and time, once they hear it, on how they dispose of the matter, they will announce what calendar date it will reach city council.
Gotcha, all right.
We made a motion to defer. We're recording that. So what we need to do is we need to amend the agenda, come back to that, come back to that piece, have a new motion to amend the procedure. We have a motion to amend the change.
Agenda amendment, yeah, just so it's in the record, the right one.
Okay.
Once public comments finish, we amend the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Couse?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could I request a clarification on the procedure that would be applicable to this rezoning in light of the action that may have taken place between now and then about whether ordinances will require a single read or two reads in order to be adopted? In other words, assuming that the city council finalizes the ordinance that will approve matters on a single read, will that be applicable to this rezoning, or will it be governed by the procedure at the time the application was filed?
Bill, would any ordinance that was in process before the ordinance passed be set to the new ordinance or to still be under the old procedure?
You'd go under the new procedure. It's a procedure, it's not a substantive, it's not a substantive right, it's a procedural difference. We've dealt with that previously in the transfer of cases from DeKalb.
Right.
It's simply procedural, and we have the right to be in that procedure. We'd have a one-read at that point in time. I wouldn't have done it tonight on a case that was here tonight, you hadn't signed it, but on the next meeting, we would have gone forward with a one-read.
Excellent question.
Thank you. So our next council meeting is the 14th? 13th?
13th.
All right. Didn't mean to throw another date out there for you. All right, so more public comment on this or anything else on the agenda? Anybody else, do you have any comments?
I have a comment.
Okay. Put the timer on it, please.
This is my own, my own comment, right?
No, it's still public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd just like to request to Susan and to Marie, maybe look at our schedule and how we handle the timing of our meetings, commission meetings, especially when they fall around holidays. And let's try to anticipate when there could be potential problem or severe inconvenience for residents to be able to attend. Our effort, obviously, is to maximize attendance, and let's take, let's be proactive, take changes in advance and publicly in advance, and with an explanation of why we have a change from what might have been a regular stated date. Leave it to you.
Absolutely, and as you will recall, several weeks ago, you did approve and move on an amended calendar for the planning department. So if we do find those conflicts, Mr. Gabia, that you're referencing, we'll come back with an amended calendar for you all to adopt, so that that would be part of public record, and then we'll post that on the website and also, you know, within the offices. So we'll look at that for the remainder of this year.
Right.
And then as we schedule all hearings for 2014, we'll keep that in mind for all council meetings, ZBA, planning commission, and any other appointed future board.
So no meetings, no meetings or hearings should be held day before or day after a holiday?
Correct.
That's what I would think of being...
Right, we'll look at that, absolutely.
And if it's a four-day Christmas holiday, for example...
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to mention, if it's a holiday week of a greater scale, then...
Like my birthday.
Your birthday certainly is always at the top of the list, and then anything short of that, we'll make sure that there is no conflict for that week.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for suggesting that. We'll take care of that right away.
All right, any more public comment? Thank you, Citizen Gabia. More public comment? All right, we'll close the public comment section of this meeting, and then is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda to re, to reopen. Could I get a direction from our city attorney?
The motion would be, I move to reopen new business, one, for the purposes of setting the hearing, setting the hearing date for the, or the next date for the city council would be September the 10th, 2013.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we reopen new business, item number one, amend the agenda to reopen new business, item number one, to adjust the date.
To do something, all right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Can you specify the date?
Well, this is just a motion to amend the agenda.
We hadn't gotten to the ordinance yet. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda as stated by Councilman Madison signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now we are on time warp, directed visit, number one.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, that we amend the motion that I, under new business, item number one, and amend our dates so that the planning commission will hear rezoning ordinance ID 1098, RZ 13-01 on August 7th?
7th.
August 7th?
They already got to do that.
August 7th.
That was already on there.
And then to be heard by the council on September 10th.
Sounds good. Is there a second on that? What's the second? That's an ugly motion.
I'll come back in and hold them up.
Any discussion?
Discussion, that was certainly...
Well, we did a...
Discussion we need.
Procedural thing we've...
I hope this shows the folks that we want to make sure that the citizens of Brookhaven can have their voices heard on pretty much anything we do, so, anything we do, so that's why this is being done, to make sure people have time and that can be there and that things can be done in the most judicious and fair manner, so that's why we're doing this. Any more discussion or comment about it? Yes? Uh-oh.
We will do an additional mail-out to the mail list for this case to let everyone in the neighborhood know.
Can we hire one of those sign twirlers with the...
We can't, no. Wait, can we read the sign?
To stand at that church? All right, any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion as stated by Councilman Madison signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam clerk please enter the minutes that that is passed. All right, now back to the regular agenda, mayor's comments. Don't have any comments? Not going to shell out my time either to anybody up here. Do we need the executive session?
We do not.
All right, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Secondly.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?